All right, let's call it to order. Sparks City Council Meeting for Monday, March 24th with a roll call.
Mayor Lawson.
Here.
Councilmembers Abbott.
Here.
Vanderwell.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Rodriguez is absent. Acting City Attorney Cobrely. City Manager Laufman.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, and we'll go to our invocation speaker, Simone Holtam.
Hello. Thank you for letting us say a prayer on behalf of the Sparks Bahis. This is a prayer for unity from the Bahi writings. O thou kind Lord, thou hast created all humanity from the same stock. Thou hast decreed that all shall belong to the same household. In thy holy presence, they are all thy servants, and all mankind are sheltered beneath thy tabernacle. All have gathered together at thy table of bounty. All are illumined through the light of thy providence. O God, thou art kind to all; thou hast provided for all; dost shelter all; conferest life upon all. Thou hast endowed each and all with talents and faculties, and arst all submerged in the ocean of thy mercy. O thou kind Lord, unite all. Let the religions agree and make the nations one, so that they may see each other as one family, and the whole earth as one home. May they all live together in perfect harmony. O God, raise aloft the banner of the oneness of mankind. O God, establish the most great peace. Cement thou, O God, the hearts together. O thou kind Father, God, gladden our hearts through the fragrance of thy love; brighten our eyes through the light of thy guidance; delight our hearts with the melody of thy word; and shelter us all in the stronghold of thy providence. Thou art the mighty and the powerful; thou art the forgiving, and thou art the one who overlooketh the shortcomings of all mankind. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bybee, will you lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, we're gonna move on to a public comment. And I understand I have a bunch from the chamber leadership. I'll just call you all. Are you all coming at once? Is that what you want, or you want to go individually? All right, well Tammy Wright. Ashley Radke. I can't read that one. Le- area, what?
Lenea Warren.
Thank you. And Eric Garcia. Come on down. Well, you, two of you can have a seat there. We have microphones that they will turn on for you. I hope.
Oh, right here. I don't know if there's.
Hi there.
Hi, my name is Lenea Warren. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce Leadership Program along with my colleagues. I'm also a mother of three boys that attend school here in Sparks. I'm a new resident out in Spanish Springs off the 445. I love saying that.
Must be from California.
Been here for 15 years. In fact, that's one of the points that I wanted to mention, Mayor Lawson, is that I'm so happy to be a resident of Sparks. I feel like our family is sincerely flourishing, and we feel so safe in our beautiful community out in Spanish Springs. And I just want to reiterate our true appreciation of what you guys do. And being a part of the Leadership Chamber of Commerce Program, it provides a person like me so much pride. So, thank you.
I'm also, my name's Tammy Wright. I'm also part of the Chamber Leadership Program. And so far, it's been very fascinating. A lot more interesting than I thought originally. Attending the meetings, going to Carson. I'm also a resident of Spanish Springs. So, and yes, I did come from California a long time ago. But I'm a contributing member of the community. And I also really enjoy living in the city, and I'm also very thankful for all that you guys do. Thank you.
Eric Garcia, also a part of the Chamber Leadership Program. I've lived in Sparks pretty much my entire adult life. Went to Sparks Middle School, Sparks High School.
Railroad.
You know, if you would've told me when I was in high school that I would get a chance to stand in front of you guys, I probably wouldn't have believed you. So, I really truly appreciate everything you guys do with the resources you have. I know, being in a leadership position in my company, sometimes you don't have as many resources as you'd like. So, I just wanted to say thank you for all you guys do.
Hi, guys. I'm Ashley Radke. I'm also a member of the Chamber Leadership Program. And I am also a new member of Sparks, not from California. But truly enjoy the community that you guys have built, so just wanted to say thank you for everything.
I think it's also important to share the organizations of which we represent. Ashley?
I'm with Nevada State Bank and Private Bank.
I'm the branch manager of the United Federal Credit Union right down the street here on Pater.
And I'm with Farm Bureau Bank, and I'm a Northern Nevada Market Manager.
And I'm a Senior Business Consultant with Paychecks, Payroll, and HR. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
The Leadership Program is one of my favorite things. I get to speak at that about every time, so I'm looking forward to hearing what you get out of it at the end, is when I usually speak. But it's cherished this time you have together because those, you are the people that are gonna be running this place in the, in the coming years. And your relationships you build now will last forever.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, Mr. Mark Markell.
A Uke�a man was in critical condition Friday at Loma Linda University Medical Center, where he was taken for treatment of head injuries after a car crash Thursday, authorities said. Mark Markell, 24, was thrown from a 1977 Datsun as it overturned on Live Oak Canyon Road at the eastbound Interstate 10 off-ramp at 4:30 PM, said California Highway Patrol Officer Amber Drysdale. The driver was driving south on Live Oak Canyon Road when he lost control of the car, struck a curb, and skidded into the off-ramp. The vehicle rolled over several times and landed on top of Mark Markell, Drysdale said.
Thank you. Hi, people. My name is Mark Markell. Country Nevada resident. I live at a, a house for the, pardon, building for the for people with TBIs, which I have. It's, yes, I, and I'm very grateful to those people. I'm grateful to you people. Anyways, God will me allow to show people and warn people about getting in the car with a drunk driver. It's a terrible thing, as you can, as she said. I have TBI, so my brain's kinda messed up. And I know I'm an old man, and it happened when I was 24, and I've been doing this since I was 20, probably. Probably 25, because I was in a coma for a month and hospital for six and a half months, I think. Or five and a half, I don't know. But people, please don't drive with drunk drivers, and don't drink and drive. It's, it's, if you get, I'm a perfect example of what drunk drivers could, can do. So, please, don't drink and drive, and drive with drunk drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right, let's move on to approval of the agenda. Anyone wishing to pull any agenda items? If not, I'm looking for a motion. We got a rookie on the computer, so bear with her. Ms. Vanderwell.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. I'm looking for approval of the minutes. Anyone have any additions, subtractions? See ya, Mark. Thanks for coming again. Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve the minutes of the Sparks City Council Meeting for March 10th, 2025.
Mr. Abbott.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, we'll move on to 7.1. Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northern Nevada. Do we have anyone here for that? Come on down. Have a seat. You're gonna give us a presentation?
Yes, sir.
Tell us what, all the great things that are up to?
Exact.
Awesome.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
How you doing?
How's it going?
Okay, well, first of all, thank y'all very much for allowing us to be here. Obviously, it's a public meeting, but thanks for giving us some time anyway. Um, we, I am the volunteer specialist. My name is Michaela Porter at Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So, I do a lot of our community outreach, and Derek is here as well.
Yeah, my name's Derek Bovee. I'm the CEO of Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northern Nevada. I've been with the agency for seven years, so thank you for having us today.
So, at Big Brothers, Big Sisters, our mission is to create and support mentoring relationships that ignite the power and promise of youth. Essentially, that means we believe all youth are born with the potential to thrive and achieve all of their dreams. Just some kids, like the ones we serve, need a little extra support. So, what is a mentor? There are a lot of different things can come to mind when we talk about mentorship. I'm sure a lot of us, if not all of us, have someone, you know, during our formative years, who showed us how to write a resume, or, you know, apply to a job. And that's exactly what we are giving to our littles. A mentor to us is a pillar of support, and someone who is going to be there for their little, as they are. If there's only one person in our little's life that, you know, supports them and accepts them as they are, then that person is their big. Why mentorship is so important right now? Our youth are going through a lot of different things. Our youth are in an opportunity desert. We have kids that are in classrooms with ratios that are, you know, subpar to national standards. We also have, you know, the internet and social media, which can be an expander, but it can also be a hindrance. We have kids living in rural communities that are isolated. And a lot of our kids, their, you know, community consists of the people in their home and the people in their classroom. So, we're trying, we're giving mentors to these kids so that they can expand what the definition of their community is. Our littles are aged 6 to 18, so you can be a little once you're six years old and in first grade. 99% of our families are living at or below the federal poverty line or receiving some kind of government assistance. For our small fraction of families that don't fall into that category, their little has experienced some kind of adverse childhood experience that can be living in a foster family or living in a single-parent household. Right now, we have 35 matches in Sparks, so those are matches where the little lives in Sparks. And most of those matches, the big lives in Sparks as well. And we do have 25 kiddos on our waitlist that are in Sparks. About our bigs, our bigs are 18 years old or older. We expect them to spend time, not money, so we're really focusing on that individualized attention and quality time. Our enrollment process is multi-leveled. We do background checks. We do a lot of vetting because child safety is our priority. But the wait time for a big is not as long as the wait time for our littles. A little bit about our matches. So, we do offer partners' matches. That's when two mentors are a big to one little together. And most of our matches hang out around four hours a month. It depends on which program you go into, which we'll get into that. And all of our matches are based on compatibility. So, we're not taking the last little on our waitlist and the first big that signed up and just putting them together. We're really trying to form quality friendships. My match was made based on the fact that we both really love to read, and we're both little nerdy kids that like to go to the library. Derek, what is your, what are your similarities?
Yeah, so I got matched with a little brother who goes to Glenn Duncan Elementary School, and he loves sports, and I love sports. So, basically, everything we do is sport-related, so he's on a flag football team, so I go to his practices, I go to his games. But we also, you know, go to Nevada basketball games, go to Aces games together. So, we spend a lot of time being active and watching and playing sports.
So, the two programs that our matches can go into, community-based is four to six hours a month, broken up over at least twice a month. So, that schedule is very flexible, and it's totally dependent on our bigs' availability and their littles' availability. They're picking their little up from their house, doing a thing out in the community, and then bringing them back home. So, that's all about showing them experiences and opportunities that they most likely would not have been able to see otherwise. And then we also have our site-based program, which we are partnered with Matter Academy and the Boys and Girls Club next door, and a couple of their community sites. And that is when you're seeing your little specifically on the same day, same time every week for one hour each time. It's a little more structured, and the timings are pretty flexible with right before school, right after school, or during their lunchtime. We also have the Bigs with Badges Program. Our Bigs with Badges can be in either the community-based or the site-based. That is exactly what it sounds like. It's our bigs that have the badge, whether they are sworn or civilian. That is all law enforcement, first responders, military, both active and retired. So, and the reason this program was created was to really foster the relationship between the community and our first responders. A lot of our kiddos have had some kind of experience with first responders, whether it's, you know, juvenile justice, or an incarcerated parent, or, you know, an emergency. And a lot of those experiences are negative. And so, we really want to show them that, you know, you can have a positive relationship with our first responders, and that this is a career opportunity for them. A lot of our littles do not realize, you know, the world is their oyster, and this program really helps show them that. It takes a lot to do what we do. You know, a lot of the way we are supported is by the community. So, we are pouring into our littles from all of these different buckets. Our bigs are there to be their friend. Our parents are there to give them love and discipline. And we, as an agency, are supporting our bigs and our littles and our families. And the community supports us right back by, you know, having a safe place to be and fostering that connectivity. And then, once our littles graduate the program, they pour back out into the community by achieving what we call one of the three Es. So, that's enlistment in the military, enrollment in post-secondary education, or employment. So, these are some of our community partners. Our discount partners include Playful Potter, Bridewire, and Orange Theory in Sparks. And then we have some donation bin partners, too.
Yeah, so we are partnered with a company called EcoWorld. And so, the goal of that program is to keep usable items out of the landfill, but it's also to support Big Brothers, Big Sisters mentorship. So, as you can see on this map here, we have these donation bins that are placed all throughout Northern Nevada. Each bin generates between $500 and $1,000 annually to support Big Brothers, Big Sisters matches. And this is a unique partnership with EcoWorld because they recycle the donations that come through. So, a lot of your donations that end up at a thrift store end up in a landfill eventually because they don't, they're not the quality. And a lot of thrift stores don't have the ability to process, launder, those kinds of things, where we have partnerships where we recycle those goods. So, if you donate linens or used clothing that's damaged, we sell that to Toyota. Toyota turns it into pulp, and it's the padding in their carpet of their vehicles. If you donate, like, your old lawn mowing shoes, right, there, those cannot be reused. But we have partnerships with Goodyear and Nike, and they can be recycled. They make other tires through Goodyear, or Nike makes track and field, like, tracks for high schools, and they use the recycled shoe material for that. So, it's a, it's a way to keep things out of our landfills and support Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So, we're always looking for business partners that can place these bins. They take up less than half a parking space, and then they're serviced on a, on a daily, weekly, or monthly basis, depending on the volume that comes through those locations.
So, with all that community support, we do have measurable outcomes for all of our participants. The biggest thing for our bigs that I hear the most from all of them is that, you know, having that fresh perspective from, you know, the kids that are our future is, you know, unmatched. Especially if you don't have a lot of youth in your life, or, you know, if your children are adults now. I know something that I learn from my little all the time is, you know, just, it's not as serious as you think. You know, anything at all. It was raining one day, and I was driving, her name is Delilah. I was driving Delilah around, and she was like, "Oh, do you think Jesus is sad?" And I was like, "Oh, because of the rain? Like, maybe. Yeah, I've heard that." And she said, and I asked her, I was like, "Well, what do you think he's sad about today?" And she said, "Robbery." And I was like, "Oh, wow. Yeah, for sure." So, it's just, it's really refreshing to know that that's like the worst thing in the world to an eight-year-old. And it's, it's really an unmatched feeling to be able to spend time with them and see them grow throughout their childhood. For our littles, we know that our kiddos graduate high school at a higher rate than the other children in Washoe County. Last year, we kept 96% of our littles out of the juvenile justice system, which is a really big one for us because we do serve kids that are already involved in juvenile justice. And most of our kids do maintain or improve their educational experiences as well as socio-emotional development. Also, society-wise, economically, our littles are more likely to make more over time, salary-wise, and they're less likely to be involved in drug abuse. Socio-economically, they are more prepared adults, and more prepared adults usually turn into more competent, productive adults. And they are also more likely to rise beyond what their parents did and break those generational issues like poverty and incarceration. So, the biggest thing, of course, I would love if everyone in the room became a big today. That would be amazing. That's the big goal. But also, just having us come and speak and, you know, being able to educate y'all in the community on what we do and what we need is a really big thing. We also have all kinds of events coming up all the time. We have our golf tournament, and then our gala in the fall. So, if you are curious about any of those things, you can reach out to Derek. These are our littles. So cute. And any volunteer-related stuff, you can reach out to me.
The purpose of us being here today is that we've been in Northern Nevada since 2001, and we serve the Reno Sparks and Carson City area. But we haven't really developed a strong support system in Sparks. And so, we're, we're reaching out because we need support from Sparks businesses and from Sparks leaders. Like, we have these kids on the waitlist. Those are just the kids that are on our waitlist. Like, the need for mentorship in our community is great. And so, the more we can serve, the more, more kids we can get into our program. And so, for us, we, we call it our M&amp;M's, right? It's money and mentors. So, for every child that comes into our program, we have to raise $1,200. But we also have to find them a big brother or big sister. And our biggest need is always male mentors. So, women volunteer at a rate about four times as, as high as men do. So, we need men that are involved. We, we have a lot of little boys that are waiting for big brothers. And what we often see that happens most often is that we get a family that has multiple kids, a little girl and a little boy. That little girl gets matched pretty quickly because women are just wonderful about volunteering and showing up. And then that little boy is sitting there waiting.
He's volunteering? Go ahead, Donald.
Hey, Derek. I was just following up. I know you were looking to try to find a, a home to store some stuff at. Have you had any luck with that in Sparks?
No, so, yeah, so we are, we're currently looking for a storage facility for our donation center equipment. So, we're currently off of Fourth Street, but that property is having some code enforcement issues. So, it looks like we might overnight have to find a new location, so we're trying to be proactive on that. So, we are looking for a place to store our semi-truck, which is where we load all of our donations into, and then a few of our donation bins. So, we are looking for storage locations, so logistics centers, large, large spaces that we can pull a semi-truck in and out of are definitely partners that we're looking for right now.
Anyone else? Do you give your card to this gentleman in the blue jacket?
Yep. Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Future, future big brother?
Thank you so much.
We might have a parking spot for your bin.
How about a bin? I was thinking a bin right here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Thank you, Michaela. All right, Proclamation for Community Service Agency 60th Anniversary. Do we have anyone here for that? Come on down. Diane will read your proclamation, and then we'll have you say a few words afterwards.
Whereas the Community Service Agency, CSA, has been a pillar of support and advocacy in Northern Nevada for six decades, working tirelessly to empower individuals and families facing economic hardship. And whereas, since its founding in 1965, CSA has dedicated to, is, has been dedicated to fostering self-sufficiency and improving the quality of life for low-income residents through a variety of programs and services, including early childhood education, workforce development, holistic case management, and home weatherization assistance. And whereas, CSA has played a vital role in strengthening our community through strategic partnerships with local businesses, government agencies, and community organizations, ensuring that those in need have access to essential resources and opportunities for economic security and well-being. And whereas, the agency has been instrumental in addressing the region's housing needs through the development of 26 affordable housing complexes for low-income families and seniors, further demonstrating, demonstrating its commitment to community prosperity and stability. And whereas, CSA's 60 years of service and dedication stand as a testament to the commitment of its staff, board members, and community partners in the fight against poverty and in support of equitable opportunities for all Northern Nevadas, Nevadans. And now, therefore, I, Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, hereby recognize and commend Community Service Agency for its invaluable contributions and proclaim March 24th, 2025, as Community Service Agency 60th Anniversary Day, and encourage all citizens to join in celebrating this remarkable occasion and to support CSA's continued efforts to build a strong, more sufficient, self-sufficient Northern Nevada.
So, give us your name for the record, and go ahead and say a few words.
Leslie Colbree, CEO for Community Services Agency. First of all, council members, mayor, thank you so much. 60 years is a long time. I haven't made it there yet myself, but I've been with the organization for seven years, and to, to celebrate this monumental date was, was incredible. It was actually last, last week that we had our 60th, on the exact day that we became incorporated, which was pretty cool to do that. And we've had, we had quite a few individuals from the community come in and actually just tour and understand what we do. And, and again, the, the overwhelming support that we've had in the 60 years and continue to have, not only from Washoe County, but certainly from Sparks as well, has been amazing. That's the only way that we can get this work done. And the community members have been overwhelmingly supportive as well. Happy to know that our, our latest project, our newest project, is the Early Childhood Center in, on Sullivan Lane. And it is doing very well. It's the first project that we had to combine Head Start and Early Head Start together. So, we have the zero to three, and then we have the three to five. So, they have that congruency in, in service. And what an amazing building, and what have been amazing support. And certainly want to thank Diane for being on my board, as well as providing us that support for Sullivan Lane as well. So, thank you very much.
Questions from the council? Ms. Vanderwell?
Leslie, can you share about the opening of the Head Start on Sutro? Because I did walk through the facility. So, if you can share the new facility on Sutro.
Yeah, so Sutro is going to, again, Sullivan Lane was our first, our very first attempt of combining our Head Start and Early Head Start. Back in 2019, 20, we all know what happened then. I was able to garner support from the federal government to bring Early Head Start back into our organization, as well as expand it. And so, we've been able to do that with the, with the little guys, and certainly with the families. But to be able to offer that consistency between Head Start and Early Head Start is critical. And we found that out in Sullivan. So, we're, we're trying to duplicate that also at Sutro as well. So, we're pretty excited about that. That'll be our second approach to that as well.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, Leslie.
Thank you all very much.
Will you come down? Will you come down here? We're going to take your picture.
Of course.
And put you on the internet for our millions of viewers to see. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to 7.3, Dog Therapy Appreciation Day. Is there anyone here for that?
Hi, I'm Joe Bowman. I'm president of the.
Have a seat for us, Joe, real quick. We're going to read your proclamation and then we're going to ask you to say a few words afterwards.
Okay. We'll try to get these dogs out of here.
I watched a, a video about labradoodles and they're a big ball of energy, so glad to see that's normal. All right, Ms. Bybee.
Okay, I am thrilled to be able to read this proclamation. It has a special place in my heart. Whereas, therapy dogs have been a source of comfort and connection in the communities of Reno and Sparks since 1997, bringing unconditional love, joy, and support to those in need. Whereas, through Paws for Love, Paws Through Love's Paws to Read Program, therapy dogs serve as patient, nonjudgmental reading partners in Washoe County libraries, fostering confidence and improving literacy for struggling young readers. Every Washoe County library hosts therapy dog teams monthly, ensuring early learners have a safe and encouraging space to develop their reading skills. And whereas, therapy dogs play a crucial role in promoting student well-being at the University of Nevada Reno and Truckee Meadows Community College, offering much-needed relief from stress and anxiety, especially during the exam season, through their calming presence and general gentle companionship. And whereas, at the Child Advocacy Center, therapy dogs provide solace for young victims of crime, offering a steady source of comfort during moments of deep distress and uncertainty. And whereas, Paws for Love therapy dogs are trusted allies in times of grief and loss, providing support to Washoe County School District students and faculty, and standing by first responders as they navigate the emotional challenges of their work. And whereas, these dedicated therapy dogs enhance the well-being of our entire community, brightening the days of hospital patients, seniors, veterans, and those in mental and physical health facilities through hundreds of compassionate visits each year. Therefore, on behalf of Mayor Ed Lawson, Mayor of the City of Sparks, we hereby proclaim Friday, April 11th, as Dog Therapy Appreciation Day in the City of Sparks.
Got a wild one there.
Yeah, the clapping is a bit much for poor Dya. We want to thank you for this honor. We're very proud of our dogs. We're very proud of the work they do and we just are very appreciative of this honor. And I would like to introduce our treasurer, Annie, our events chair, Darlene, our membership chair, Vicky. Heading out the door is our vice president, Dya. So thank you so much.
She's a dog.
Well, Sid, can we get a picture with you guys?
And, and I'd like to comment before you guys sign up for a picture. Can you give me the dogs' names?
Yes. Baxter, PJ, Cody, and Dya.
Thank you.
And we will get you their little fan cards.
Okay. Thank you all for being here today. And my dad did the Paws for Love, Paws for Reading, Paws for Passengers. So I know all about that program with his dog, Nellie Bell, and just gained as much, the emotional support was as much for my dad as it was for Nellie and what she could do to help, to help, you know, whether it's kids in finals at the university to reading and kids would read. I mean, it was just amazing to watch the effect that you make in the community and how often you're utilized and called out when there's emergency situations to schools, to different, and, and it's just, it is, dogs have unconditional love. And thank you all so much for being here. I know firsthand the benefit both to the community and also to my dad for, for this program. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Baby.
If you say round two, three.
You have a lot of time.
Can you get him to do this?
One, two, three?
She settled down for the pictures. Let's move on to item eight, consent items. Anyone wishing to pull a consent item? If not, I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Anderson?
Move to approve Agenda Items 8.1 through 8.4 submitted.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote and motion carries unanimously. I get to see the vote early, that's why, no. 9.1, consideration discussion of possible approval of a building official's appointment to the Building Code Board of Appeals from the following pool of applicants listed in alphabetical order. Don Mackey, Edward Oliver, Clifford Springmeyer. Did we have? Come on down.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Council members. I'm Aaron Viviano. I am your Building Plans Examiner at the Building Department here. I'm sure you are all aware that we have a Board of Appeals that the building official has in place for addressing when the public comes with an issue or a concern about how codes might be applied or interpreted. So it's a five-member Board of Appeals and we basically have two openings currently. The positions that are open are for an architect and/or for a construction manager. And we basically have two people that have applied for that position, one being Don Mackey, who's an architect. He's also basically leaving the position currently and then applying to refill the spot again. The second one was from Oliver Edward. He is a, a director for Toll Brothers, has a degree in construction management, and basically meets the requirements for what we're looking for, for these people that are subject matter experts should we have some sort of a claim come towards the building official. We did have a third applicant who applied, but his background was an electrical background. And because we have another, next year, we're going to have some more openings. The electrical position will open up. Hopefully, we'll be able to put him in, in place at that time. So basically, it would be staff's opinion that we, we ask that you approve Don Mackey and Oliver Edward to sit on the two vacant seats of the Board of Appeals.
Okay, questions from the council? All right, don't see any, so I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Abbott?
I'm going to approve Don Mackey as the registered architect and Edward Oliver as the builder slash superintendent of building construction to the Sparks Building Code Appeals, each for two-year terms ending March 31st, 2027.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Do we have the name correct? We have Edward Oliver in here.
I have his actual application here, so let's go see what we've got there.
Don't want to get his name wrong.
It is Oliver Edward. Edward is the first name, last name Oliver.
Okay. All right, we got it right then. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote and motion carries unanimously. Thank you. 9.2, consideration discussion of possible approval to change the City of Sparks Group Health Plan document benefit from the current practice of allowing retirees to return to the group health plan on even-numbered years in accordance with NRS 287 dot 0205 to allowing retirees to return to the group health plan any year. Mr. Martini?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, John Martini, your assistant, short-timer assistant city manager. And I'm also before you today as the chair of our group healthcare committee. As the mayor introduced, the item before you is in regard to when a retiree could re-enter back into the city's group healthcare. As a matter of background, this is covered in state law. It's NRS 287 point 0205 that states someone can come back on the city's group healthcare in any even-numbered year, so 26, 28. At the group healthcare committee, a conversation was started about allowing retirees to enter any year. And on November 21st, staff came before the group healthcare committee, talked about the pros and the cons. Legal helped out and said, although it's in state law, we can be more, we can do it more often. On the other side of the table, being our human resources department and our finance department, it is very difficult to analyze how much this could cost the group healthcare plan. There is a fear, if you will, that the, that it could be gamed a bit, where someone could jump off the group healthcare plan, the city's plan, jump into private plan, knee, hip replacement, knee replacement, jump back on, on any given year, utilize the city's very generous benefits, and then jump back off. So it is, it is impossible for, for us to estimate what the future cost could be. That said, on January 16th, it came back in front of the group healthcare committee. They did vote to forward this to the city council for determination. Question at hand is, do we stick with NRS 278, which is every even-year, or do we amend the group healthcare plan to allow re-entry basically at any time? That concludes my conversation with you today, my report, and I'm available if you have any questions.
Ms. Vanderwell?
Thank you, Mr. Martini. I just have a question on retirees. Are they paying the healthcare premium?
Yes, they are.
And is it 100% or is it subsidized?
There, it is some of both, depending on which collective bargaining unit you're in or resolution. Some employees do carry post-employment benefits that are paid in their retirement, either through the conversion of sick leave, or some of our employees through their CBAs actually get a stipend at retirement.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Bybee?
I'm a little concerned, my fiscal conservative side, and especially given where we are right now of possible cost increases. And I guess maybe what would help me is when it's been even-numbered years only, if I had an idea, like, how often does an employee jump back into the program? Is it because they, obviously, we've got a great program and, and if they're paying part of it or all of it, maybe it's better than what, you know, once they left the program. But do we see a lot of transition back and forth? I mean, would this open a gate to a lot of more people? And can they, I guess, can they come in and out? So if they can come back in, can they leave? Can they come back? Can they leave? Or once they're back in, they have to stay in? Kind of give me an idea how that works.
They don't have to stay in. You, you could leave. You can only currently now re-enter in even-numbered year, so you could go back and forth. There's kind of a two-year gap there. You know, I mentioned our concern about this being used or gamed. It, you know, in, in fairness to retirees, there are changes in life where you have to lose the insurance, perhaps a spouse had it, retired or lost their job. That's, that's another reason I want to come up back on the city's group healthcare plan. There's some of both. It's just when we, the, the purpose of the group healthcare committee, it, it is tangential to collective bargaining. Benefits need to be collectively bargained. That's why the group is set up. Their purpose is to monitor and control costs, to recommend to the city council any benefit change. This is one. Unfortunately, from staff's perspective, you guys like to hear costs of a, of a bargain unit. We're not able to give that to you today. It's just, it's impossible to cost this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, John, on that, every other year, how often are we seeing folks come and go?
Councilman Anderson, I don't have exact numbers. It does happen. Folks do go off and come back on. I suspect it is, I'm not going to say it's being gamed on the two-year that we currently have. Things change in life, so people naturally could, you know, come off to, like I said, join a spouse's. That job ends, they, you know, can come back on. We don't have data to really get to that point. People do go on and they do come off currently, though.
Mr. Abbott?
Councilman Anderson asked my question, but I got one more. So what if, I guess, do you have to retire from the city to be in our health plan? Like, say, any one of us, when we are no longer, if we term out or we don't run for office, can we come back to the health plan even though we're not technically retired out? Like, if I'm in between jobs?
That is a good question.
Sorry, I wasn't trying to stump you.
Nancy, can you come up and give me some help, please? I always think in terms of retirees, so, like, a between job, if an employee, I, I know the Cobra option is out there. In between jobs, so maybe analyst Nancy will help us with that one.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. To answer your question, you do have to retire under PERS to be eligible to come back under the NRS.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Ms. Vanderwell?
I told you I'd get you. I'm, the vote of the healthcare committee, was it unanimous or were there any dissensions on it?
It was unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Then I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Are you looking for a motion to approve or a motion to reject?
Say that again, please.
I just need to know if the intention is to approve or reject this item and we can put up the recommended motion.
I don't know. That's why we have a vote.
He's waiting for one of us to make a motion.
That's why.
Thank you. Give us just one minute.
Yeah. Any affirmative? There you go. You took a vote without taking a vote. This is where the Jeopardy music comes in. Okay. There's a motion up on the screen.
I'm going to approve the proposed change to the City of Sparks Group Health Plan document benefit from the current practice of allowing retirees to return to the group health plan on even-numbered years in accordance with NRS 287 period 0205 to allowing retirees to return to the group health plan in any year. Ms. Vanderwell?
Second.
Okay. Comment, Ms. Bybee?
Discussion? I will support it because the healthcare committee unanimously supported it, but I have reservations because of the cost and because even if it costs us a little more right now, since we're looking for every little bit of money we can save, considering our financial situation, I'm not comfortable with it. But being, I have to trust the committee made this decision and so I will go ahead and support the motion as presented. Thank you.
Okay. Then any other comments? If not, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, 9.3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first reading of Bill 2831, an ordinance adopting the 2024 edition of the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, Uniform Mechanical Code, Uniform Plumbing Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Existing Building Code, International Wildland Urban Interface Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2023 edition of the National Electrical Code, and the 2024 Northern Nevada Amendments, each of which are to become effective January 1st, 2026. A public hearing will be held and Bill 2831 will be acted upon at the regular meeting of the Sparks City Council on Monday, April 14th, 2025, at 2:00 PM at the Sparks City Council Legislative Building. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Then?
have reservations because of the cost, and because even if it costs us a little more right now, since we're looking for every little bit of money we can save, considering our financial situation, I'm not comfortable with it, but being, I have to trust the committee made this decision, and so I will go ahead and support the motion as presented. Thank you.
Okay, then, any other comments? Not, please vote. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Plurk, 9.3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the first reading of Bill 2831, an ordinance adopting the 2024 edition of the International Building Code, International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, Uniform Mechanical Code, Uniform Plumbing Code, International Fuel/Gas Code, International Energy Conservation Code, International Existing Building Code, International Wildland/Urban Interface Code, International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, 2023 edition of the National Electrical Code, and the 2024 Northern Nevada Amendments, each of which are to become effective January 1st, 2026. A public hearing will be held, and Bill 2831 will be acted upon at the regular meeting of the Sparks City Council on Monday, April 14th, 2025, at 2:00 p.m. at the Sparks City Council Legislative Building. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any, that's, no planning, public hearings, comments from the public? Anyone in the public wishing to speak? Not, this will go down as one of the fastest meetings ever?
We haven't got to our part yet.
Yeah, well. Announcements from the mayor, city council, city manager. Mr. Manager, you got anything? City council, do you have anything? Come on, Paul. Just from me, I want to tell you, I'm a proud father. My son got matched and placed to become a doctor. So you'll see me in Kingman, Arizona, a lot more these days. So he's back on the West Coast, which is making me and his mother very happy. Go ahead.
I'd just like to thank the Chamber Leadership Program for being here. I too have spoken at a couple graduations and a couple of the meetings in the last, I've been on the council 10 years, and so have had the pleasure to be in those sessions, meeting all the new leadership. My son went through the program. I know a lot of young business leaders that have gone through it, and it's an amazing, amazing way to learn. I was surprised that it's learning about the community, so many different things that whether you're in banking or wherever you are, you might not know about, or people you meet, and things that even happen throughout our community. So I think Ann Silver and her staff over there do tremendous job, and I think what you will learn to take into the community as community leaders, not just industry, in your industry, but in the community itself, are, is super, super advantageous. And I would think, because it's such a big group, the community, the chamber is, that there's got to be some big brothers, big sisters, possibilities, and I don't know if you've spoken to them, so, just a thought. Okay, thank you.
There we go. All right, with that, then, we're to my favorite subject. We're adjourned.
We'll call today's Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting with a roll call.
Chair Abbott?
Here.
Agency members Lawson?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Vanderwell?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Rodriguez is absent. Acting Chief Legal Officer, Coburnly?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer, Lawson?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Off to 3.1, public comment. I don't have any cards.
We do not have any.
I don't see anyone from the public. Nope, I don't see anybody either. We'll close that. Item four, approval of the agenda. Looking for a motion. Agency member Vanderwell?
I move to approve the agenda, it's submitted.
Thank you. Agency member Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Perfect. Item 5.1, minutes, a consideration discussion of the possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for February 24th, 2025. Looking for a motion. Agency member Bybee?
I move to approve the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting for February 24th, 2025.
Thank you for that. Agency member Anderson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Passes unanimously. Item 6.1, consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of February 11th, 2025 through March 11th, 2025. Looking for a motion. Agency member Anderson?
I move to accept the report of claims and bills and appropriation transfers for the period of February 11th, 2025 through March 11th, 2025.
Thank you. Agency member Vanderwell?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Passes unanimously. Item, no business items, still comments. 8.1, comments from the public. Any public comment? I don't see any either here. We'll close that. 8.2, announcements from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. I don't see none either. I hope I hit my three-minute mark. We are adjourned.
There we go.